Okay, 7:06, special meeting of the Morgen Grove Library Board of Trustees. To discuss bylaws, Tuesday, January 21. So, who's calling your roll tonight? Okay, roll call. Paul Burr, not here. David Kellerman, not here. Arthur?
Here.
And Carlotta?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
And you?
Yeah.
And Mark?
I'm coming.
Okay, you want to start line one?
What I thought I would do, and stop me if the... What I wanted to do is go each article, go each paragraph, so basically depending how it's divided. With our, with the committee's original recommendations, when I have additional recommendations, I would, I will add them in at that point instead of going over on the end of the... I thought we could do one article at time or whatever.
Fine.
Are we actually voting or making changes?
If we, if we make the changes, we all agree, we can vote to accept it tonight.
The whole thing or are we just doing section by section?
I'd prefer to just do a motion at one.
Don't we post so many days?
I think you should do...
Post bylaws?
I think, I think if you're, if you're going to vote on something, I think you should...
Keep it for the regular board meeting?
Agree on the whole thing.
That's fine.
Probably, probably have somebody write it up, write up... Well, I'm sorry. What I would suggest, in the tris, you can decide how you want to do it, but I would suggest that you go through article by article and sort of say, okay, everybody has a consensus that this is how Article One should read, and then, and then somebody should really put all the changes into the finished document. You know, put the finished document together, and then you could have that at your next board meeting.
Brand's that board meeting.
To adopt, to adopt the...
Since it's on my computer with all the various reports.
That's okay, well then let's get it all revised tonight.
And now that everybody gets to...
Why don't we... The state statute say that they have to be written notice of the proposed amendments, alterations, or reposits by presented in writing at least 10 days prior to the meeting.
We did that to us.
Your, your...
To the board.
Your bylaws say that, the state statute doesn't say that.
Actually, that's what it's...
If any bylaw changes has to be presented to the board 10 days in advance of the next board meeting in order to consider a change.
Right, my, my point is, is that, is that if you put those all together and, and then adopt it at your next board meeting, everybody will have had a chance to read the entire document one last time with all the changes, and then that way, not that you would make a mistake, but that...
No, never.
But that all the changes are together the way everybody remembers it, that way you're not, you're not doing it on the fly. I don't think you should do it on the fly. I think you should, you should have one motion, one document, and then if there's changes, when somebody sees the finished document and says, well, I felt we agreed on such and such, then they can bring that up at the next meeting, and then you really just fine tune a couple things at the most.
Okay, and can I suggest we try and do this by night?
It's fine by me. I'd like to do it by 7:30.
I would too, so let's go, back to the middle.
I definitely want Frank to make comments throughout, so you should all bear...
What document are you staring at?
I'm staring at the one with the yellow or the green.
That's got yellow and green on it.
Right, because this is the most complete...
Proposal revisions as of 10:30?
Date of 10:30.
Okay, we're all on the same page.
And I'm looking at Article One, Section One.
Okay.
What we did, and I have a copy of the original bylaws here if anybody has questions.
Is that all in here, or?
It's in here, but it's hard to read sometimes because it's crossed off. Anyways, in Section One, we took the first sentence and dropped the second sentence because we thought it was redundant. Is there any feelings one way or another? It's, it's minor. Okay.
I mean, I will just say that, I would just say you're describing your service area. I mean, maybe it, maybe it's, it's implicit in the fact that it's the Morgen Grove Public Library.
But all libraries do not follow their village boundaries.
But we, we serve more than you.
Well, no, but the point, okay, maybe that's, maybe that's the point you're trying to make.
We do serve more than growth.
Maybe that's the point you're trying to make.
Yes.
Okay.
Then, then it'll remain just with the black title.
Then you know what? Then I can retake that sentence.
That'll be the Morgen Grove Public Library.
The mission statement we didn't touch, although I have noticed that ALA has a, one of their trustee tips, it gives some information on a mission statement that I think is worth looking at someday in the future, but not right now.
Okay, so Section Two.
But I thought it was something definitely could add to the substance of our statement.
All right. Article Two, Section One.
Article Two, trustees. It will, there's an additional sentence in here for clarification to avoid what has happened in the past.
You know, I have a point on that, if I may.
Please do.
I would suggest that I do strike the, the words, or is contemplating moving away from the village, and so that, um...
We get there for a reason.
They don't become a resident, a non-resident.
So they actually move.
They don't become, you know, unqualified to hold the office until they actually move. In, in contemplating...
They may move in the fourth room.
Contemplating, I mean, I'm contemplating retiring to California, so I mean, does that mean that somebody, somebody violated the bylaws because they didn't, somebody like me was thinking about retiring in California? I mean, contemplating is not...
I, I don't have a problem with that, as to any other...
No.
What would be the reason, what would be the reason that the trustee would be required to say, I'm thinking about selling my house and moving away?
Oh, it would be because of Krista Quinn.
Well, maybe the board could then put it out there if we're looking for, get a packet out so that it...
But you technically shouldn't do that until the person either resides or...
Anybody at any time can express an interest in serving on the board.
They have to one guy.
Maybe when you enter into a contract, saw your house, and you're closing 60 days away, maybe then.
I don't, I just don't want a repetition of what she pulled, and I'm trying to put a little safeguard in there.
But not everybody is like her.
I, we're fortunate.
That was the craziest thing I'd ever seen in my life.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, well, that was pretty...
I'd be warned about this, was the only time it's ever happened in the state of Illinois.
It's probably happens in the governor's chair because we have so many real ethical governors in the state.
Anyway, I'm just...
Well, they just moved the prison, they don't actually...
Is anybody that's not in prison?
It's right.
Prison is a change of residence.
It's all the old way the governor makes our decisions.
Why don't you strike that or is contemplating?
Why don't you say that the, that, that if a trustee moves, moves away from the village? I would just say, uh...
I mean, we could just take a counterpoint.
Moves from the village or...
Moves away from the village.
Moves away from the village.
Or should we say if the trustee moves from the village?
I think we should say moves from the village. I was going to say out, but from, from the village.
Moves from, then just take everything off between...
Or is contemplating.
Or is contemplating moving away.
Moving away, all the methods.
And then it'll read, if the trustee moves from the village, it is incumbent upon the trustee to immediately notify the board, et cetera.
I like that. Okay.
I think that's good.
As long as we're on this section, you know, it doesn't have a change to do with this section, we had a, we had the law, the Illinois law with us while we were going through this to make sure that we covered everything, and one of the things that we noted is that somehow, some way, our elections are off. Our trustee election is four, three, and one, and the law says it's supposed to be three, two, and two on a seven-person board.
Well, you're not going to change that now, and you've got people that are in common listening.
Well, I know, but how does that, that's a lawyer question, how does that get, how do we get back on right? Because we're off and off.
Just keep it the way you are. One thing you might want to consider, which would get you back somewhere on track, is, you know, and one thing you could consider, did anybody ever consider moving or changing the term from six to four?
Oh, yeah.
Definitely.
I mean, one of the thoughts is that, is that, I mean, some, some villages do that, some libraries do that, where they go four years and stuff, and they feel that maybe there's more enthusiasm for the position because it's not quite such a long term.
Yeah, it's one of the things that I would like to look at in the future. I didn't, I purposely didn't pursue it with this because there was enough going on already. I think that's a big enough question, and it's a question in itself for one. There also is some comments in the state statutes about changing from six to four years. There's some limitations, but they shouldn't affect us.
We can just do it, yes, the board, you can just make...
Yeah, right, they're doable, but there are guidelines.
And you can't, you can't change someone's term.
No.
No.
Because, and that's why I'm saying that you can't really get back on another schedule.
Right, if we get a resignation, can we get, can we get things?
When you get a resignation...
You have to fill out the term.
Because the term, because the term was put to the voters for six years, so the voters elected someone for six years, so you're really stuck with that.
But at some point it got off. What I'm saying is we're not compliant with the law right now.
Well, I think it probably got off.
Yeah, but you're, you're less compliant with the law if you tried to change the term that the voters put in.
Frank, when I was appointed, before I was elected, I was appointed not to fulfill her term, Quinn's term, I was appointed to serve until the next election.
Correct.
Right, see what happens there.
And that's how it got, gets off. I mean, she probably had...
No, it was thrown off before that. It was thrown off because the four of us shouldn't have been able to run the same thing.
But people, no, people quit.
It was the four.
Well, that's what it happens though, when something like my situation...
You have to run the next election. There was enough people fell off that...
When, when somebody is appointed, they have to stand for election, the next election.
The next election.
So that's how you know when four are all once.
They get thrown off.
When you, when you got four, four people on the board, okay, and that election was for four people, there were three terms, full terms, and one unexpired term.
There was one unexpired term.
Which was Calamox term, was the unexpired term.
Yeah, but ours is the only one coming off next time, up for election next time. He's alone in it.
Because his term expires.
Yeah, he's alone.
So that, can we change, so that would he, if he runs again for four years, instead of just start it with the next person's assignment?
We, we could, moving forward, make the next election four-year terms. Yes, yes, we could.
If, well, then every, every year, four-year terms.
Yes.
No, one of our six years has turned out.
I know, you're like...
And he would have to do some fumbling around to get the, get to a four-year.
No, 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 no.
No, but...
You just reset them.
It just would take time. No, but you, we'd have to get rid of our six-year people.
If everyone on this board stepped down, there'd be seven openings in the next election.
And that...
And they would all have the same term.
No, then you would, that, you wouldn't want...
It'll have the same four-year term.
Actually, no, because, no, because...
We'd be filling in expired terms of the other people.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it got messed up somehow.
It has this term on somebody's term.
You have to get the...
Okay, this isn't relevant to the bylaws, so let's go. This isn't relevant to the bylaws, let's go.
Uh, I'm on Section Two of Article Two. We're still talking about trustees. There was a large section added because we thought it necessary. I'll let you read, and I'm not going to read it to you.
I have to run this one, but it was a very good idea.
Thank you. Wanting to pass around a suggested rewording of, of your Article Two, Section Two?
If it's shorter, I'll take it, if it's longer, I'll... This is probably, oh, I'll get it.
There's one on the...
I can't see four here. I'm not there yet.
I know, don't, don't look at four, but...
Okay, it's already shorter, I like it.
I thought it, it needed to be maybe a little more direct.
I, I don't know.
But there are classes that one should take, that's given by the library in general.
By the library system?
Yes, by the library system, and it's much more complete. It gets into...
There is a, there is a, there needs to be both. There's an orientation.
And so this is, um, this is, this is replacing the red, it's not replacing the, the black. The black would still stay in.
Oh, okay.
And then this is really just, this, this really just goes at your orientation, uh, idea, which is actually an excellent idea, that, uh, boards that really have, um, engaged members usually have an orientation for new members.
Which you didn't specifically call out in your update, in orientation.
You were thinking of the outside orientation.
Yes.
Right. Oh, an outside, I was thinking of an inside orientation.
Due by both.
The outside was very important.
Yeah, well, that would be good, that would be good.
So if you would write into yours something to do with the outside orientation, I could, I could use either one.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with doing...
Well, the thing is, you can't compel somebody to do something. That's why you want to say that, you know, you want them, you know, you can compel them to, to come to your orientation, but you can't compel them to go to a class. You can't compel them to go...
True.
To go spend a day to do something. Their condition of their, you know, well, I guess if they don't do it, what are you going to do? That's why I'm saying...
There are not, there's nothing...
Yeah.
They should understand that before they run for...
But they should, you're right, you're right.
They should also tell us they moved.
Yeah.
You know?
It's no fun.
Sometimes it just happens. So, I'm okay with Frank's, I'm okay with the other one.
Yeah, I don't see that one.
I do think the director's going to be aware of these classes, and we'll make the board aware.
Well, the director's job is to help get us through this stuff.
And then the only other thing I had, and I didn't, I, I, I looked at this, it sort of stuck out to me the last, when I was reviewing for the last meeting, um, maybe the full term either goes at the beginning, or it goes...
Yes.
Or it goes in Section One of Article Two?
Just put it right there at the end, term of six years.
Well, I mean, where it's sitting right there, it just seems like it's...
Or make it Section Three, and make it...
Well, composed of seven members serving six-year terms in Section One.
Section One, oh, yeah.
I mean, that...
Thank you.
Except there might be some who are appointed after, during that term, and they won't be appointed for six years.
Well, I think you need to say that the term is X numbers of years.
Right, what, right, the intent of this is to, is to define the term.
Because nowhere in the previous bylaws was there any definition of like that.
Yeah, it just wasn't there.
But just after each trustee...
I think it could just be another section, and that way you don't even have to worry of work.
You could do, yeah, I mean, you could just...
They'll give the simplest.
You could make it, you could make that Section Two, and then make this...
Yeah, make it Sec, yeah, do that. So, Section Two...
Trustee shall serve for a term of six years.
You're making it a Section Two, or you're changing?
Or, well, why don't we just add it to Section Two? Each newly-elected trustee shall be sworn in, so there's all the swearing in, or whatever it may want.
I was, I was just going to say, if you put it right at the beginning of Section Two, it would make more sense.
Yeah. It must be a term of six years.
If you just move that sentence.
Yeah. Okay.
So you, you would say what you would make it?
So, Section Two is going to start, um...
Trustees...
Full-term section.
Trustees shall serve a full term, a term of six years.
A trustee...
A trustee, no, a full term of six years, because we have so many partial terms.
Well, you can't use a shell, because that's a compelling thing too, so a trustee term is six years.
Yeah, I, I think that works out well, way up there.
And that's the first sentence of the section.
Section Two.
Okay, so the whole thing.
So we're not moving this to a new section?
There's no new section.
No.
Yeah, that sounds better, it's two each section. Does it take much?
And I think if you want to say, I mean, um, if you want to say, uh, trustees are encouraged to, um, attend, you know...
A trustee training session.
Trustee training session provided by, you know, who provides that, the Illinois or the American Library Association or...
RAILS or whatever.
I don't know, who does it?
Why don't we just say, are encouraged to attend a, by continuing what we call...
Trustee education session.
Encouraged to attend a trustee orientation course.
Seminar.
Or seminar.
There's more than one course.
But I think you've got continuing education there, right?
For the employees.
Yeah.
Hopefully employees.
Yeah.
Just as an aside, the first line of Section Two, the reason the last letter on the column on this paragraph is red, this was a grammatical correction, and there's a number of these that I'm just not going to even mention, but I, just so you know that there have been some changes that don't change anything.
All right, Section Three, it shall be...
Section Three.
Because yes, we do...
The way one I'm using Frank's. I just have to get my notes, so I'll help type this. Okay, Section Three. This was basically clearing up things, one...
Yeah.
It's, we don't, I don't believe it's our role to determine library policies, line Three, as much as it's to review and oversee them.
Right.
Actually, don't we determine them? They do procedures and we do policies.
What we could do, what we could do...
I would say yes. We, I said you're charged with setting library policy, right?
Right, and they do procedures.
Well, doesn't, isn't the policy brought to us, and we kind of...
And staff write it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, write it so much.
But the person that's actually, the, the entity that's actually adopting it is the board, is, is voting on, okay, we're going to adopt the non-resident user policy, we're going to adopt...
So we adopt policies.
So you're going to say adopt policies and...
Yeah, we adopt.
Our own policy committee can also...
Well, we get to committees, when we get to polit, committees, one of the committees is policy committee, and I have some comments there that you may, that either are here or some of my additional stuff that we'll get to, but here I don't, I mean, if we want to use the word, I don't care, we don't really determine so much as what was...
No, we do, we're supposed to determine.
Adopt.
Well, we, you know, so to review, adapt, and oversee library policy?
To review and adapt.
I don't feel like we, we haven't written a policy.
I mean, writing a policy...
We don't do that.
We're not, no, we're supposed to do, no, 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 no. Not really, because a policy is a step-by-step, what is that if somebody doesn't return a book inside?
No, that's a procedure.
That's procedures.
That's a procedure, okay.
Right, we're in charge of policy, that's what the trustees are mandated, to do policies, and the employees are procedures. No, 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 this is a legal...
I think, I think, I think you're all right, I mean, you really are, you're all, you're
all correct, you're all certainly saying the same thing, you know, what Kathy's saying is, is who is charged with the responsibility? Okay, ultimately, who set that policy? The library board set that policy. As a practical matter, you're going to have the professionals suggesting to you, okay, this is, you know, this is an appropriate policy for us to have, you know, it's going to be presented to you for your review, you're going to give your input in it, and then, but the, but the librarians aren't going to adopt that policy, the board is going to adopt that policy, so if somebody has a complaint about the policy, they're going to come and complain to the board about the policy, they're not going to, you know, although, they might go to the librarians as well. They're going to go to the librarians as well, but you know, it's, 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 when, when we say the word determine, or we say the word adopt, we mean, you know, who is the entity that, that has ultimate authority for doing that act? It might not mean that you wrote it...
And it's the trustees.
But the mission statement, Section Two, that applies to that, and it's assisting the community in its pursuit of personal growth and lifelong learning, and you can't limit that. And you can limit that sometimes by offering a overview of something that would change the position.
Yeah.
If you follow me there.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that I totally follow you, but, but, uh...
Well, are we arguing whether to put a word in or take a word out?
We're arguing over the word determine versus adopt.
Add a word, I really, if we do all of the above, then, you know...
I would say adopt and review, because review is part of the policy committee's job.
And...
And review.
Well, I, I mean, I, I would keep the word determine only because legally that's what we're charged, when you look at what the job of trustee is supposed to be, that's in the job description, exactly determined.
But is an adopt and determine one of the same?
It's determined policies.
I mean, it's, it's, we're starting to...
Right, I know, we're wasting too much time.
Right, and there's some hams here, I mean...
But I, you know, if it was me, if it was me writing it, I would use the word determine.
Then let's leave determine.
Leave a term in there.
Without limiting the personal growth and lifelong learning.
Well, you're going to, you're going to do everything...
We're going to get people from all different areas.
But everything you do, everything you do, I mean, the word determine was, was determined in the, in the original one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it was, it was in the original one, that's what I thought. What I was going to say is, is everything that you do is done within the context of your mission statement, in other words, you know, we're going to do this while it's consistent with our mission statement, and that, and that's, that's the analysis that we're going to go through whenever you take a step. So I don't think you need to repeat that.
Clear, as long as there's no restrictions.
So is it going to be determined?
Determine, review, and oversee, I guess.
Okay, you want it all in there?
Yeah. The rest of it looks okay to me.
Section Four is something that was being done, but not in the bylaws.
Right. And then Frank's got a little alteration on that.
Here's my suggestion on Section Four, as the committee presented it, was that we have a, um, we already have a, a closed meeting recording policy that sets up, that already establishes when you're going to review tapes and when your compliance is going to be, but I, I did put in that your open meetings at compliance was going to be in June and December, just so that in the future, everybody always knows when to expect it and things. But I just thought that, um, that, that this was maybe a little too into the detail as opposed to, you know, for a bylaw, should be a little more broad maybe.
Frank's words are okay there.
Yeah, because somebody part of the law...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you have to follow that.
All right, words are okay there.
It's going to start getting confusing, so...
And then you're, you picked up the numbering, right?
Yeah, I, there's numbering mistakes all over the place, actually. Section Five...
Section Six is Section Five, really, Frank.
What should read Section Five, trustees should make every effort to attend board meetings if the trustee knows they will be absent. From scheduled meeting notice should be sent to the board president and library director. It just, it was missing.
Fair enough.
So that's changing number five, right?
That's become Section Five. Section Six, that...
Is, are expected, is that any better than should? Are expected to make or ever?
I like that.
I mean, it wasn't a should, you said before it wasn't, or that you said should isn't the only word to use.
He said shall.
Oh, okay.
Shall, shall, should, should is, is a little less mandatory than shall.
Shall be expected, sounds like point of a gun.
But, but actually, I, I kind of like the are expected, I mean, because you do want...
I like are expected.
You do want, you do want someone that's...
Trustees are expected to make?
Yeah, I like the, better.
Okay.
It's minor enough that I'm not going to get into fight anyway.
Good.
Good, because I was going to fight you over it.
Yeah, that's... I'm ready. Before you know how to punish somebody. Uh, Section Six, at the discretion of the director, a trustee may be asked to attend a conference or meeting, this was just filling in, oh boy. Okay, section, between Section Six and Section Seven, for some reason, in the original, bylaws, the word vacancies appears, we didn't think it was necessary, it, it's, it's not an article, it's not a section, it's not in anything, it's just a title.
Yeah.
So I took it out.
I think that's fine.
Section Seven, um, the change is basically, um...
Added the word the board, it was a title of your board.
The board?
Yeah.
That's true, the type, it was missing. But what, what pointed out to me is something I figured out later, vacancy until the next annual library election, there is no such thing as an annual library election. Vacancy until the next annual library election, there is no such thing as an annual library election.
Oh, that's true.
So it should just say until the next, like, until the next election. Those two words should just be taken out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's more accurate.
If you say, as long as you say in accordance with the applicable statute, because some people are gonna serve until the next election and some people will serve the remainder of the term, so.
Right.
And, and remember if you appoint, if the vacancy occurs within that short window before the election occurs, you know, then they, they don't, then they serve through that election and into the next. You know, it's like twenty-eight months you can serve as opposed to two years.
Between like the, the close of filing?
Yeah, because, because there's having, yeah, because there's filings.
As long as you have the accordance with.
Accordance statute you covered, right.
Okay, that covers my first point, too. Okay. Section eight, the board as a committee of the whole shall prepare and submit appropriations and tax levy. I made a change this afternoon, let me read what I'm changing. The board as a committee of the whole shall prepare, under the guidance of the library director, and submit appropriation and tax levy requests to the village. I'm understanding this as being the budget.
Yes.
And I think the director has to do the main part of a budget, I don't think we're capable of it. Because budget is day to day expensive.
As a practical matter, yes, but as a technical matter about what the trustees are supposed to do, we're supposed to, that's our job, is to present and prepare the budget. And yeah, you'd be crazy to do it without the library director having a huge input in it.
My understanding is we're to oversee, but not to present, to prepare, is my understanding.
I agree with Art.
From everything I've read, and I've been reading more than I care to.
We are.
Well, they bring the budget, we ask the questions.
For levy.
We come to some agreement and approve it.
Right.
Yeah.
The director knows.
They write it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, most, most boards, the staff prepares the levy.
Right.
Presents it to the, you know, presents it to the board. The board reviews it and the board adopts it. I mean, I don't think that the board is gonna, you know, start pulling.
I'm not counting pencils.
Start, right, I mean, I don't think the board is gonna start pulling, you know, the board isn't gonna pull, you know, department heads about what their needs are, budgets are and stuff like that.
That's what I'm saying. The budget is day to day functioning, even, even replacing a major piece of equipment, it's still day to day.
Well, who's arguing, hey?
Why don't you say, why don't you say that, what did you have before on?
Well, there was no section eight before.
There were some things that were added based on ILA recommendations.
Yeah, there wasn't a section eight.
There was no section eight on the original. Uh, that's for one.
Yeah, the references to the budget were in article three sections.
Because we just say that we prepare and submit the appropriation and tax levy, not that we're preparing the budget.
Why don't you say.
That we're preparing.
But the appropriation and tax levy isn't.
I think you should say, I think you should say the board or the committee of the whole shall, you know.
The budget, the budget is not the tax levy.
Right.
So, the tax levy is the letter that we write to the village, it says, collect this much money for us.
Right, but the appropriations.
The budget is, so the budget, the budget and the levy come through this group.
I don't think you need appropriation, but aren't, don't you really, don't you really just adopt the budget?
Yes.
Every year and then you request a levy?
And the levy's part of it.
And the budget is part of the budget that, yeah. So why don't you say?
Yeah, if you take out, the sentence just says, submit the request to the village.
And, and I don't know why you need as a committee of the whole, because what?
Well, 'cause the board is the committee of the whole.
Right, but the board, the board, the board shall.
Actually.
Shall annually adopt a budget and submit the tax levy request to the village, aren't you wrong? No?
I mean, that's what we do.
I think, was the intent of this to get at, um, the discussion that we had earlier about, okay, well, is, what's our process? Is our process gonna be a two-step process where we have a preparatory meeting and then a final meeting? Well, I mean, why don't we just say that then? What, even if that's, if that's what the preference of the board is, is to, is to make sure that you always have a two-step process?
Until this year.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that you should have it, if you wanna have it as a process.
Unspell it out.
It should be spelled out.
So basically.
Then it, then it, then there's no question.
We'll have a budget first reading and then a budget.
That's, I was just gonna say, it's basically a first and second reading.
So right then.
So why don't, why don't we, why don't we, to language that.
Do you wanna do the language, you're much better at language than I am.
I could, I could, I could certainly do that.
I mean.
So the intent here is to craft a budget process as section eight, right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna leave it blank for now. If you do something today, that's fine.
So is that saying that the director presents the budget first?
Yes.
To the board.
Then the board gets time to chew on it. The next time they meet, they'll act on it.
Because we're different than other, other boards that adopt their own tax levy. Because they all have requirements that, you know, it's gotta, there's, there's gotta be, some have a thirty-day public approval period for their budget, you know, to be quote on the table.
Because ours is under the village, though.
Because it's under the village, so all we really do is tell the village how much money we want.
Is that by law, it's under the village?
Yes.
It's the way it was set up.
Well, that's the, um, that's the local library act.
Okay.
As opposed to the library district act.
I don't wanna know anymore, stop.
Well, local libraries, local libraries are, are, you know, are number one. You know, really are just the, you know, the area of the, of the village that's used your service area. And all your financial is really comes through the village. You know, you don't, you can't levy on your.
Okay, next.
Section nine, the board of library trustees shall establish and review at least biannually a written policy for the selection of library materials and use of library materials and facilities. I'm not sure why, this was.
Because it was in the law.
It's in the law.
We haven't been doing it.
And we just haven't been doing it and it wasn't stated and that's why. Next.
Kevin, is that, is that something that?
I mean, is it practical? Probably not.
Well.
But it's.
All policies are supposed to be reviewed.
All the policies are supposed to be reviewed.
I don't know if that's sort of specify this one versus all the others.
Because this one's specified by the Illinois statute.
Which is fine.
Yeah.
That's the only reason.
You should, you should have it in there.
All right, good, we made it through two pages.
Well, but.
Bart, shut up.
I'm afraid of it.
I, you're afraid of it?
Yeah, I'm afraid that, uh, trustees may, may assume the responsibility of the director.
And that, no, I mean, there was, uh, an interesting article in the last day, I, uh, the tips was about controlling what's being read.
Yeah.
And libraries are the last best of, of freedom.
Exactly.
And to, and to give the board the possibility of saying, no, they don't want books that fall into the X, Y, Z category, could be a problem.
It, it would be a problem.
I think, uh.
Well, I mean, they could, if they wanna do that, they could do that, whether this specifies a bi- biannual review or not.
Well, in that sense, but this invites them to do it, in a sense.
So you're saying that the.
But that goes against the mission statement.
The gist of the article was that, was they should change the law to take that out.
Do.
Uh, no.
Do we have a?
It was actually how the board could protect the librarians in their.
Oh, oh.
It was more of a.
Do we have a policy on how we select?
The library.
The library does.
We do, yes.
So, I don't think that Art knows that.
Isn't.
There, Kevin just.
Two years, right?
Yes.
Not twice a year.
No.
Semi-annual is twice a year, biannual is every two years.
So according to Kevin, we already have a policy for.
Selecting.
For the selection of library materials.
Sure.
I mean, it's, it's old and needs updating badly is one of the things we've had on the list to do for a long time, but.
That's their job, they need a way to edit this.
That's not in here.
The policy?
Yeah.
The policy is about seventy pages long.
It's not a bylaw, it's a library, it's a policy.
Maybe you don't, maybe you don't wanna have to say that.
It wasn't in great detail by every subject area.
Seventy pages long.
It does follow.
Does it still cover the Dewey Decimal System?
I'm not reading.
Kevin, it does, it does follow, however, the mission statement, the pursuit of personal growth and lifelong learning.
Yes.
For everything, not just, doesn't limit anything.
Right.
The policy, the, the policy doesn't limit anything, it's just a policy.
Okay, as long as it, as long as we're not limiting people's use of the library.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, article three, number one, we took out a couple of words.
I did?
Yeah. I made two sentences out of it instead of one.
Yeah.
Basically.
No, trustee shall hold more than.
That's my favorite excuse for everything, it's better grammar. Not that I know grammar, but you know. I'm on section two already, which we didn't touch.
And section three?
We're in section three.
Like from its members, okay.
Yeah, I find use the word numbers strange, too.
Me too.
It is, but it's, it's used an awful lot.
I know, you know what, it's used later in here and I didn't change it. Yeah, it's used here coming to, right, right, it's used several times.
I have no changes to make on page four.
Uh. What I did do, and what I'm trying to say with that box with the arrow, the president and each officer was all in one big paragraph and hard to read. And what we did is basically break it down.
Simplify it, good, it's good.
It's just a simplification.
Anybody want a glass of water?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Two, there?
Where is she?
I left mine in the car. It was too cold to go back.
You'll have ice when you get back.
One heard A.
They do it all the time, go on, I'm sorry. A precedent?
A at the bottom, A president at the last.
In the absence of the president?
Yeah.
A board, at, at a board meeting, yes, at board meetings?
In the absence.
No, I was, actually, I was, I was really getting at the, at the absence of the president.
Last line of.
The last, the very last line, I, I still like the chairman or chairperson.
You have to present that for me.
I don't care. Just, I don't remember why we did this, thank you.
Oh, so you'd have a chair, you'd have a chairman of the meeting?
Well, the president chairs the meeting.
Oh, so if the president's not there, you don't become the president, you become the chairman of the meeting, gotcha. I get that.
You're, you're correct.
Yeah, I get that.
And just to be obnoxious, we could say the trustees' president shall elect one of their, one of the trustees' presidents.
Yeah.
Just as chair, period. You don't have to, no, if you wanna be gender neutral.
No, chairperson, I will not be called a chair.
Chairperson.
I will not be called a chair.
Okay.
Um, okay.
Secretary, you rewrote that again, huh?
Uh, not that much after I looked at it. It says total rewrite, but it really isn't. What I basically did is I broke it down to what actually the secretary does not do. The, like, taking minutes of meetings, things of this nature. I broke it down to these are done by the director or her aside. He is her side person and made him only responsible to see that it was done, so to speak. That was the whole intent of the word changing.
Because in fact, the secretary doesn't physically do those things, the director posts the board meetings and et cetera, et cetera.
Well, the secretary does record the proceedings in the votes.
In votes.
We'll just record it at, at the beginning.
Yeah. Until I figured that one out. I'm, I'm a little slow.
What happened in that first line, you said the call of the roll?
Call of the roll, I'm good.
Are we stalled out or are we talking about something?
We need to see if there was anything.
Are we looking at your suggestions here for the secretary or what's?
It's, there's so much the same, I don't think it matters, I would go with what we put in here.
Okay, I didn't know our.
I don't know what got into me, I got carried away, you know. I, 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 my self-importance gets seen by way every so often.
So now we're.
So are you saying we're sticking with, with this?
Yeah.
Which has the secretary doing all these things?
No.
No, it says under the, in conjunction with the director.
It gives notice to the regular and specialties, he sends a copy of the, wait a minute. In conjunction with the director.
Come and the secretary.
Which aggregates all the responsibilities.
Uh, the library meetings. Uh, on the revised, on the one that I sent out under my name, uh, it says, I can't even find it.
Here, it should be there.
In addition, the secretary is responsible for overseeing the following duties carried out by the library director or his or her administrative staff. It may be clearer in this.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I think so too.
Yeah.
So.
We like the, we like the second one.
The one that, yeah, this is on this other page, yeah. The green one.
The one that Bart gives.
Yeah, the green one.
That has no corrections added at all.
Oh, amazing.
Good.
I was saying, indeed, you want to call the roll, right? I was just like.
Yep, and, and I put in to call the roll. Okay. Okay. Um, treasurer. I have a number of little changes. That's all there is.
Okay, shall be the duty of treasurer exercise general supervision of all finances and ensure that the treasury should be special. And for overseeing. And then, um, after that second sentence is so in addition, right, not in additional?
I mean.
Oh, in addition.
Right, right, right.
I don't even see that.
Fourth line.
So at first.
Line four.
In addition. In additional, that's a good word.
The treasurer is responsible for.
Authorizing.
The first change that I marked from the one that the committee came up with that you're reading is to, uh, to submit or making recommendations for investment of funds not needed for current expenses for board approval. This is not being done by the treasurer anymore, it's being done by an outside, uh, whatever they're called, financial advisor.
So do you wanna strike that then?
Well, the only time that it does come in, though, is during the finance committee meetings. If we're talking about taking a, um, making a change in the near future, whether or not we wanna keep a, keep a maturing fund liquid or reinvest it, and it does get talked about at the finance committee meetings.
I hope not too often, I hope they're doing a good job.
No, 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 they are doing a good job, it's for what we would need. No, 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 they are doing a good job, it's for what we would need to be, like for the carpeting.
Okay.
For those kinds of things.
Oh, no, it's something was coming.
So this is just a safety valve statement?
Yeah, no, yeah, it's a, it, it, if we need, say that we have to get money liquid.
No, I mean, it'll, well, if we don't have it in here, the treasurer can't do that.
Right.
So you should leave that wording in here, so we can do it just in case.
Yes.
You know, when I read it, it sounded like deciding where the money's actually going to be invested.
Oh, no.
I know, I know that's not, I just wonder if.
I read it that way, I read it that way too.
I did too, and that's why I decided.
Is there a way to, to make that just a little, make it read a little less like you are actually saying where to invest the money?
Are we talking about making recommendations for investments?
Yes, yes. So in other words, there's, there may.
It is qualified, it is qualified at the end for.
Right.
Which is fine.
Yeah. Making recommendations for investment, yeah, I mean, they're not doing the investment.
So in other words, the treasurer is not gonna do it, is not gonna.
Making rest.
Well, the treasurer's not gonna make a change until the board approves.
A determination of the availability of funds for investing? Determining, making a determination of the availability of funds?
Say.
For investing?
Say like.
Well, I, 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 I know what you mean, but, but getting back to deciding whether or not it should be invested, which is what,
if it should be invested or if it should be.
Not where, exactly, but not where, so making a determination of the availability of funds.
The way, the way it's written.
For investing.
Yeah, this doesn't, this doesn't seem to be inaccurate, um, 'cause the way it's written currently, it says, it says, uh, to submit to the board for its approval, recommendations for investments of funds not needed for current expenses.
Which also sounds like recommending where, where to actually invest.
That part we actually change, it's actually the other way around. It's things that are currently being invested that we might want to switch over into the capital or working fund because of any capital improvements we might be making. It's usually gonna be going in the other direction, 'cause PMA does, does the flow this way.
So this isn't giving power to the treasurer, it's just letting the treasurer to.
Either way, it's subject to board approval.
Yeah, so as long as it's subject to board approval, I'm, I'm good with it.
Instead of using the word direct, you can say oversee, and then it's not actually doing it.
Oversesee recommendations?
Well, somebody is making the recommendations.
Right.
Where are you, uh, I'm trying to figure where to take out.
Well, if, if the, the document is saying, roll this over, that's the recommendation. If you're overseeing this recommendation, you might say, no, 'cause we know a big expense coming up.
They don't recommend if we, to roll over things or not, they'll say this is available to be rolled over, do you want it rolled over? They don't recommend, that's not what they recommend, they recommend the instruments that are gonna be invested. And that kind of stuff.
And they, well, once upon a time, they say, you've got two hundred thousand dollars coming out, do you wanna throw it back in?
Or do you wanna reinvest it?
So they're not recommending.
Right, and that's what the finance committee does.
They're, they're giving you a safe.
Along with the director and what the board had decided previously, so we know how much money we're gonna need.
So it is making recommendations?
Yeah.
On whether to invest.
Right.
Not how to invest.
Not how to invest.
Okay, so maybe that's what we have to say, making recommendations, whether to invest.
Well, but anything you're doing isn't investing a fund in one direction or another.
It's, I, really, the way it's written is okay, it's okay.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
One thing I was, we're not, we're not finished with this, right?
No.
Okay. One thing I was gonna suggest is that, um, you, you currently have to pay after approval of whether or not the expenses incurred by the library. And I, and I understand that we're not really doing that.
Right, that's why we changed it, because I'm signing these things right now. Anything out of the ordinary, I'll hold back for a board meeting. But the, the current business, otherwise we'd be running sixty days behind, our meeting is until the third Thursday of the month. And so that's why we changed this, is in the normal, authorized payment of expenses incurred by the library in the normal course of business. Otherwise, I shouldn't be signing these things, except once a month at the end of board meeting, which would really mess up the library.
It depends on what the spending policy is, because of the spending policy, you know, most places have a spending policy for, requires board approval. You, you will have a spending policy.
Which we did.
Oh, yeah, but we have a ton that exceeds a spending policy, every time there's an insurance payment, it's some twenty-five thousand dollars, and there's all kinds of contracts that are many thousands of dollars, but they're yearly subscriptions.
Right, but those could be submitted to, in other words, the checks could be written, the checks could be written the day of the board meeting, and assuming the board approves them, then the checks could be sent out, and then you comply with your, with that, with that idea that the board is actually approving expenses. I'm just throwing that.
Six weeks behind.
Right, the spending policy specifically addresses, as you said, when things are.
Day-to-day expenses.
Recurring budgeted things don't have to come to the board, so, so not, as you said, it's not part of like the policy.
Okay, okay, as long as, as long as it's compliant with the policy, that's really what I'm getting at, is because, is I think you, you run the risk that, um, that I think that the board should really be approving, you know, depending on the expense, the board should be approving particularly larger expenses, you know.
And that's why we have the, the new spending policy, and that's how come, if there's any question about anything, it gets held out.
Okay.
The next time I had a question, uh, there's some confusion over, in my mind, there's some confusion, we passed a policy that said the director could spend up to five thousand dollars.
Right, and that's, that's different from the librarian's account.
Okay, that's what I need clarif.
There is a separate account, and this has existed forever, that only requires the director's signature for things that have to be done right now. And, and the limit on that is two thousand, which has nothing to do with the spending policy.
Then what is the librarian's account then?
That, that's it.
What is the, the other one, the five thousand one?
Just our, our regular, I don't know what it's called. But it's not the librarian's account, just our, our general fund.
It's the thing that when it gets, when it, and when it gets over there, the, the rest is thrown into it.
All those are paid out of the, the general fund, if you wanna call it that.
Illinois funds.
Well, that's not directly, I mean.
Right.
I mean, they aren't paid out, the checks aren't written out.
Is that relevant to the bylaws?
Well, it is, because, because it wasn't, was.
So, this needs to go back to two thousand, this needs to go back to two thousand.
So it should go back to two thousand?
Right.
I don't really wanna figure it out.
We'll figure it out if.
Well, that, that makes sense, the treasurer shall be an authorized signature, try and help checks.
Excluding. Excluding the library.
Those written on the librarian's account.
Right.
And that's used rarely. I mean, at the time, I didn't use it.
Well, in payroll accounts, we don't do payroll accounts either.
Yeah.
I think the point of that was that, uh, that the treasurer is allowed to sign all the li, all of, all of these checks.
But so are the other officers too.
Right. So it's gonna be reworded, the treasurer.
Well, so then the treasurer can be unauthorized signatory on the librarian's account, the treasurer just doesn't need to sign it?
Correct.
Could be, I suppose.
Yes.
Yeah, because as treasurer, I have to, I look at that, even though I don't have to.
But the accounting just needs the librarian's signature.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what it's gonna say, the treasurer shall be the, the treasurer shall be an authorized signatory on all checks excluding those written on the librarian's account.
Yeah, true.
The treasurer.
Why don't you leave it the way, you're gonna leave it the way it is, because, because the, the account is not gonna require the treasurer's signature.
Right.
As a counter signature.
Right.
The same way with the payroll account, it's not gonna require the treasurer's signature.
Right. And, uh, oh, it, it, that was a, yeah.
Oh, here, the, the, the next sentence, the one that's in red, that says, except for payroll, and then that should say, and librarian's account.
Yeah, that would cover.
The co-sign, right, okay.
There'd be co-sign.
Okay, from the co-sign, right, except for payroll and.
Librarian's.
There we go, now we got it.
Thank you. If I get this type right, I think I should be.
Well, we're all keeping good notes.
I think we should get a salary raise for it.
You get a hundred percent more.
Twice.
You get a hundred percent more. Article four, maybe some of these, there shall be standing committees.
We just finished Article three, now we're on Article four.